All right, I think we have everyone that we're gonna have. Commissioners Belcher and Jasmine Beach Ferrara are both out of town. They did call in for the special meetings to help, but I don't think they're planning to call in for the work session. So, I think it's us. So, thank you, sorry for the slight delay in getting started. Thank you all for being with us today. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wood to make some introductory remarks and go over each agenda for today.
I wanna really address one thing first. So far as we know, there have been three employees out of fifteen that have committed or accused of committing heinous crimes against Buncombe County. This employee workforce is strong. The people that are out day to day, whether they're issuing permits, whether they're taking care of people, whether they're DSS workers, sheriff's deputies, they are strong. They have the back of Buncombe County. So, I want to applaud them, but I also have deep reservations about putting any doubt in their mind that their benefits are gonna change. I don't think this is the time for that. I think they've been through hell and back because of some people that were overpaid in positions of power that perpetrated a cover-up. And so, I strongly want to remind all of us to be supportive of Buncombe County employees because their job is not easy now. And I'm really against any discussion of cutting their benefits, changing anything at this point. I think the timing is wrong. Having said all that, now I'll shut up.
Let me correct you on one thing.
Okay.
It's three out of fifteen hundred, not fifteen.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah, thank you. But I just really wanted to say that because we owe so much gratitude to them. The position they're in is not enviable. They didn't ask for any of it. In 2016, the lowest-paid employees were promised a one-and-a-half percent raise. They did not get it until a year and a half later, and those are the most vulnerable and some of the strongest. So, I want to go on record as saying I support them 100% and really question this conversation of changing anything for them at this time. But I've said that before to everybody, so it's no surprise.
All right, well, thanks for sharing those thoughts, Commissioner. You know, and I would just say, I mean, I want to echo your observations that I mean, we all know it's just been a tough time with the county. And, you know, for us, this is a part-time job. It's an important job. We, you know, we are a policy advisory board. We show up here, but for a lot of other people, this is their forty-hour-plus, you know, full-time job. And they're totally committed to it. So, I just want to echo your sentiments about how much we appreciate the work that people do day in, day out. Oftentimes, don't get a thanks for it, may not get recognition, but it's important. It's the key services that this county government exists to provide, and people do a great job with it. So, it's our most important asset, and we have great people here. So, we appreciate that. I would just say, you know, this is a work session. This is just for, this is a discussion. We don't make any formal decisions at work sessions, so we're not gonna take any action today. But I do think that, you know, looking at the compensation for public employees, which includes both salary and various benefits, it is a really important responsibility that we have. We need to look at it, you know, in a long-term way because in some ways, there's a lot of different benefits. I agree, we want to increase. Like, I think we tried to increase pay for some of our lower-paid employees. And I want to do more of that. I want to support that more. I think there's a lot of different positions in the organization that we need to compensate at a higher level. But we also have to look at the benefits side because the benefits and the pay, it all kind of goes together, right? And we want to figure out how to make the most efficient overall use of those taxpayer investments in our workforce. So, there's a lot of decisions to be made there about which pieces of it we want to do more in, which of them we've gotta, you know, manage in an effective way over the long term. So, I think this is just an important discussion for us to have, but we're not here to make any decisions about it today.
I agree with all those things. I just think the timing is not so good.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. All right, any other Commissioner thoughts before we kick off? All right, Mr. Wood, back to you.
Well, first of all, I just want to agree with you about the importance of our employees. And a lot of this has to do with them. So, one thing I did want to start off with is, you know, there's three things that typically are gonna drive the county budget. And we're getting ready, as you know, in October to kick off our next year's budget. So, those three things are the increases in salaries and wages, the medical insurance plan, the cost of living, the increases that we look at there. And the third thing is how much money you appropriate for the two school systems that we have here. So, most of those are what's gonna drive your budget. And two of those we'll be discussing to some degree today. And as the chairman said, that'll be decisions that you'll need to make going forward. So, today, we want to go over three areas. One is the pay plan, and that's been under study for several months. We have a consultant here to give you an overview of how they've been working on the plan. The second is a review of our major fringe benefits, and Kirk will be going over those with you. And then, the largest fringe benefit, and that's health insurance, and I'll be going over that. And Kirk will probably make some additional comments on that as well. So, that's what we're here today to talk about, is those three areas. We're presenting them all together for several reasons. First, the pay plan is nearing completion, and we wanted the consultant to review the process used to develop. And we'll be presenting the finished plan for Board of Commissioner action later in September. And again, we're trying to get all of that done in September so that when we frank up on the budget in October, we know where we're going as far as the pay plan. Second, you really cannot talk about employee compensation without looking at the other part of it, which is fringe benefits. So, once we finish discussing the pay plan, we will update you on how our major fringe benefits compare to other North Carolina counties in the top ten in population. And for those of you who don't know, we're number seven in population in these states. So, that is our peer group. Third, we need to make decisions in September on the health insurance plan so that we can conduct employee open enrollment in October. You may recall, our plan is a January-to-December plan. So, in October is when all of our employees make their various elections during open enrollment. So, again, we have to have some decisions made on that health insurance plan at least by the second meeting in September so that they have time to prepare everything and then start open enrollment around mid to late October. And it takes a while to get all of that information together. The third part of the meeting is about the health insurance plan. And what we'll be doing there is going over the various components of our health insurance, medical insurance plan, and we'll compare it to those counties that I just mentioned before. In addition, we will also compare them to the City of Asheville and the North Carolina State Plan as all state employees, including teachers, school administrators, community college personnel, North Carolina DOT, and other state agencies are all under this plan. So, that will cover all of the major public employers in Buncombe County and show you how our benefits compare to them as well as the other nine top-ten counties in population in North Carolina. As the chairman said, we are not asking for a vote on anything today. This is strictly an informational session to brief you on how we compare to these other entities. And that sometime in September, we will be presenting options for the health insurance plan. As I told you, we'll need to have that in place before October so we can do the open enrollment. We will also be presenting the pay plan for your approval again sometime in September. And then, we will also begin the process of bringing options on some of the other fringe benefits for your approval. As much as possible, we'd like to get these decisions made by the end of September as we begin the budget process for fiscal year 2020 in October. I want to thank Kirk Euler of our risk management staff and also Heather Parkinson of our performance management for their detailed research on what these other jurisdictions' fringe benefits are and also preparing all of the charts. So, with that, I'd like to start, as the agenda shows, we want to have the pay plan discussion first. And with that, let me introduce the folks from Evergreen. First of all, Evergreen Solutions, LLS, is a national public sector management consulting firm specializing in working with local government systems across North Carolina and 44 other states across the nation. Evergreen Solutions is a historically underutilized business in the state of North Carolina and certified as a woman in minority business enterprise. Evergreen has 14 years of experience providing consulting options to organizations such as ours with a focus on communication and collaboration to ensure more than a one-size-fits-all solution to our HR issues. Our project director is Nancy Berkeley. Ms. Berkeley's been an HR professional for over 30 years. She's directed or served on a number of public sector projects in North Carolina local government such as Guilford, Gaston, and New Hanover Counties, in addition to a number of projects nationwide. In addition to bringing extensive public sector HR knowledge, Nancy's team provided qualitative and quantitative analysis, delivering well-rounded support to meet the needs of our classification and compensation study. So, with that, Nancy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman and Commissioners. All right, sorry. Again, I'm Nancy Berkeley with Evergreen Solutions. Again, as mentioned, we are a national public sector consulting firm based in Tallahassee, Florida. So, this afternoon, just spend a little time going over at a pretty high level the results of our study that we conducted. Again, if you have, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them as we go along. After whatever your format is, I'm certainly comfortable with that as well. So, the agenda, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the process of the study, a little bit about our methodology, discuss what we heard, myself and the other consultants, in what we call employee outreach, discuss briefly what we call an assessment of current conditions, the compensation philosophy as we understand it today of the county. Very important to how we analyzed some of the areas in our study and both end recommendations as well. Discuss briefly the review of the classification structure, certainly the results of the compensation study, the salary survey primarily. And then, our recommendations for proposed pay plan and implementation, next steps, and additional recommendations. So, to date, and you have, by the way, a timeline, I believe, in your package too. This is just kind of a high-level timeline of what we've completed and what we have remaining. But again, to date, what we've completed is what we call employee outreach. Very briefly, outreach was when myself and other consultants came here to the county, visited, and talked with employees about a couple, two things. One was we presented what the study is about or was about and their participation in the study, which was completion of something called, we call, a job assessment tool. So, their input, if you will, to the jobs and the work that they were doing or are doing. And then, we also conducted some focus group sessions, senior leader interviews where we asked some questions about compensation, classification, view on performance evaluation, and benefits. We also offered to those employees who couldn't attend one of those meetings by virtue of Survey Monkey tool employees to participate and give us input in that way as well for employee outreach. The analysis or assessment of the current pay system, I'll show you that at a high level. Again, just as a look that we always do, looking at the current pay system and where salaries, individual salaries are. The primary focus of the study is about the structure, where your structure is or isn't comparison to your peers and those recommendations. And somewhat about individual salaries, more so about the implementation plan of how individual salaries those employees here at the county, how they would be affected or not affected by changes we would recommend in the pay structure. Review of the county's compensation philosophy, I'll spend a few minutes on that, the key elements of a compensation philosophy. Again, very important, critical, I can't stress that enough, to what, both what we looked at and your future today, or today again, going forward with the recommendations. Internal equity analysis, the reason that's bold and the next one, external equity, is because we're looking at both when we do a compensation and classification study. Internal equity is us looking at the job assessment tools completed by the individuals. They were also reviewed by their supervisor for any comments that they missed something or whatever. The supervisor can change those responses, but they could give us comments in that regard. The supervisors also had a tool called a management issues tool that they can recommend changes to classifications or maybe compensation. I think this job title is incorrect, or I think it's hard to recruit or retain people. They could give us some very direct input in that regard as well. But in that internal equity analysis, we actually did, reviewed and analyzed compensable factors as well and came up with what's called a point factor system, a compensable factor scoring for each of the job classifications. Externally, then, we looked at, okay, for benchmark classifications, which I'll get into, how did your salary structure compare to peers? So, you get market data, you get internal data, external, internal hierarchy, and external market data. Both come into play when we're making our recommendations for the pay structure and individual slotting of classifications. We then developed a competitive pay structure. We, as I just mentioned, we individually slotted or made classification pay grade, pay range assignments. Not just one sweeping type of thing. We made individual pay grade assignments for every classification. And then, we developed options for the county in how you would potentially implement the new pay plan or the revised pay plan and work with the county on talking about the different reasons why you would or would not select any of those options and work with the county on proposed, recommended approach of your plan. And then, with that, we estimated the annualized salary costs for implementing that. What we have remaining is to provide you a complete draft report, some of the chapters from a result of all of this, the market summary, assessment of conditions, et cetera, in a complete draft report and then a final report. And we also are going to revise the job descriptions. So, we're gonna take content from the current job descriptions and supplement it with content from those JAPs that were completed to give you some revised job descriptions for, a revised job description for every single classification in the study. And we also have remaining, actually, training for the HR staff as well. In our methodology, so that going forward, the HR staff can utilize the same methodology. Basically, if you put this into practice, you know, with this plan, you can utilize the same methodology that we did during our study to maintain the plan. Now, I would say that we worked closely with the county during the process of this anyway, so there's some familiarity, but we give the official training document, a training manual, et cetera. Feedback from employee outreach. Okay, so this is like the collective high level, some of the comments from the focus group or sessions or interviews with senior leaders. Benefits were viewed as, you know, a strength definitely for attracting and retaining employees. There, the comment about need to ensure accuracy between job titles and job descriptions, that's a fairly typical comment that we get most studies we do, quite frankly. You know, hey, my job, the job title doesn't necessarily reflect everything that I'm doing. So, that's something that we typically hear in most of the studies that we do. The third one, while salary ranges may be competitive, the employees weren't certain about that because they didn't really understand or know what that structure was. Now, I'll pause here a minute. We typically hear salaries aren't competitive, pretty much nobody tells us they're, you know, super competitive or whatever, wherever we go and we're doing a study. But this was a comment that when we discussed that, what would you like to see changed about that? Or do you even understand that? This came out as probably fairly consistent theme that employees just didn't generally know. They felt generally, I'd say, again, this is a smaller, you know, it's perception of the group, of the people that we talked with, but generally felt that it was probably competitive, really weren't certain, didn't really understand how pay salaries progressed, et cetera. So, just note that that's something that probably could, I would say, probably in the future, maybe be improved on, that, you know, more knowledge about that. Performance evaluation process, that it has little value since pay is not tied to performance. Again, that's a comment that I hear other places that we go when pay isn't tied to performance evaluation. But again, just a note there, and we didn't ask a lot of questions in this regard, but just a note.
Can I ask a question? In comparison, comparing Buncombe County salaries to other counties, do you take into account the cost of living and the cost of housing here?
We take into account the cost of living, yes, yes. I'm going to actually, thank you. I forget to say it on the slide that that comes up, but yes, absolutely. So, something we also do, this is just part of our methodology in our studies, is we look at what we call assess the current conditions. I know you can't see all this, just wanted to be, you know, say, here's your current pay plan. This is the current pay plan with the 48 grades and range spreads from minimum to maximum, left to right iconic. Call it a 53%. That'll come up again here in a minute. I'll talk a little bit more about this range. That's fine. We have an open range, not step plans. Okay. Okay, here we analyzed the distribution of employees' salaries across the current pay ranges. So, if you take the entire structure, and there's more detail behind this, but this is total, in total, the entire structure. I mean, you took that structure, that 53% range spread into quartiles, 25%, 25%, how would those salaries fall or where would they fall? And as you see here, 40%, 40.1% fall in the second quartile, 23, 8 in the first, 29, third, 6.9, 4. Okay, so what do we, what do we do? What do we say about that? This is a time where sometimes I get questions. So, what should that look like? So, my comment to that is typically, okay, so where, I call it the where should salaries be? Well, I would say this should represent where you believe, you know, salaries should be based on your compensation philosophy, how you progress salaries, the market, et cetera. So, where they should be, you know, is this right, is it wrong, is it what have you? Okay, you tell me, where should salaries be? In other words, should they be more around the second and third quartile? That's something you might see more here as you move more towards a performance-based structure. You might see more bell curve around the second and third quartile. Again, not necessarily that you force the salaries there, but that's a typical kind of a structure where you'd see those distributions. If you had a pay progression methods or method that was based on time alone, with time of the county, what have you, then salaries should be distributed exactly according to that. So, this is, again, okay, where should salaries be? What we see in many of our studies, a kind of a generalization, I realize, is clustering of salaries in the first and second quartile below the midpoint. I gotta talk about that for a minute. Because in many cases, we're doing studies for clients who weren't able to give increases over a period of time, definitely in the economic downturn. So, salaries got kind of lunched up, clustered in those first and second quartiles. The midpoint of any competitive range, if your range is competitive with your peers, then the midpoint represents from a comp and class standpoint, compensation standpoint, where most employees would expect to have their salaries if they're performing proficiently and satisfactorily around the midpoint. So, generally speaking, closer to the first quartile, you know, minimally qualified, get experience, hopefully progress towards that midpoint. So, it's a, it's a goal or a target maybe for some of our clients today to try to get salaries at least toward that, closer toward that midpoint or slightly beyond. If salaries in the fourth quartile are being paid, if it's a competitive structure, well compared to peers because midpoint again was proficiently and satisfactorily. Okay? So, we looked at the compensation philosophy, asked these questions basically and these key elements because, again, it had bearing on how we compared data and what we're recommending. So, from a market position, question was where do you want to be in the market? You know, with your peers, considering possible things, et cetera, where do you want to be? And we understand that you want to have a competitive structure. Okay, that your pay practices, that you want to, and I'd say, I think, you know, continue basically having them be equitable, somewhat flexible, I'm talking about new hire salary practice, promotion practices, any of those pay practices, okay? And that tends to lend itself very well to the next thing, which is the pay plan design open range. If you have an open range plan, you want to continue to have an open range plan, okay? Pay increase methods, how does that come into play? Well, we want to understand, wanted to understand that for the recommendations that we made for how to place current employee salaries in that new structure. With the understanding that you now have primarily or really have the across-the-board type of pay increase methods that you were moving towards or will move towards, I probably should say, and employee performance-based pay increases.
Commissioner, are you, are you, is this meant to indicate that this is the county's current compensation philosophy as you understand it based on the study?
Yes, today.
And that there is, that there is a move towards employee performance-based compensation or more of that sort of an idea for discussion, do we want to do that?
Probably an idea for.
It's an idea for discussion. Because I think, I think when you get into the various components, you're gonna see, if you just keep giving colas, there's no incentive to do a better job. Everybody's paid the same whether they do an excellent job or they do a poor job. Whereas, performance-based, basically, you have that, have the opportunity to reward a good performance.
Thank you for that, thank you for that clarification.
And let me, let me expand on this just a bit because the comment I made before about not, people not understanding generally, I think, the pay structure, how pay progresses, that where should salaries be? Because if I asked everybody individually, I think I might get a different answer even on the where should salaries be and how salaries should progress. This all comes into play, as you can well imagine. It seemed to, to us, interviewing or having those meetings, that there was not consistency and that those practices were generally unknown and that there wasn't a clear understanding of, I'm gonna call it, so you have a structure, and I know I'm using my hands. I hope y'all are okay with that. Moving from left, minimum, to right, through the range, somewhat more of an understanding of moving up, progression. Now, that movement up is generally considered a promotion to a next level when a job actually changes. So, a good, well-balanced comp and class or compensation structure has ranges that are generally somewhat like your peers and a good balance of this too. So, you get promoted perhaps or have that ability to get promoted when the job actually changes. You have an opportunity to go to a job that's different and have you, and that there's opportunity to move your salary from here to the right. So, that pay increase, it can be either, but it probably should be well-defined and well-understood. Classification review, you probably can't read this for longer. You've got a copy in your packet. This is just an example. We reviewed all the employee input. This is just an example, we reviewed all the employee input, we, um, where we, um, believed appropriate, made some, I'll call them some sort of broad title change recommendations. In this case, this is representing a snapshot, it's not every single one of these positions that is like an administrative clerical type, but so that you have some consistency across the county. So if I'm in one department, you know, if I'm a, yeah, titled now as admin support specialist two, I'm doing the essential, same essential job duties, different specific ones for a different department, same essential job duties that somebody in another department is doing at that level. So that was a, that was something we talked about as a team, the study team as well, trying to kind of get to. And something that we do quite frequently and, and for many of our clients, try to broaden those that we can. So this is just an example of what we did for those administrative support type of positions, or to give you some ideas there. I wouldn't, um, so from a broad, broad, broad perspective of classifications, um, I wouldn't say that you needed, you, we did some changes. We didn't do like, oh my gosh, the whole class structure was incorrect, okay? So we made the appropriate recommendations, those will be in the report, and we made these broad ones. Okay, for the compensation, um, the external equity part of the study, we conducted a salary survey. So these eighteen peers are who we collected or had data for, or have you. We did adjust all of that data for the cost of living here. So it is all, when I show you the results, the overall results, it is all adjusted for cost of living here. And these were, the targets that are listed here are ones that both we would have identified and were identified as well by the county as being your peers. So we collected salary range data, again, we collected that minimum, midpoint, and max, et cetera. So for the eighty-five benchmark classifications, a subset of your classifications, eighty-five, we collected, again, salary range data, again, adjusted off the cost of living. Um, and we totaled them, um, so for different classifications, some might have been ahead, had a differential that put them ahead, or I'm sorry, you were ahead of them in the market when we averaged all that data together. We had five responses, nine responses, however many responses, we averaged that together. And in some cases, you were behind. So not all eighty-five classifications are at this point right here, that shows nine percent ahead, five point one percent, two point seven. But collectively together, you take everything together and say, in total, the structure is currently about nine point, nine percent above, okay, the competitive position at the average, all the market peers, five point one at the midpoint, and two point seven at the maximum. Now, the peers also had salary range widths of a, of an average of sixty-three, um, percent. Yours are currently fifty-three percent. So there's a little bit of this, of that differential probably you see at maximum. But all in all, right now, structures a little ahead of market. Okay? Again, midpoints considered market, this is what I mentioned before, and again, all benchmark, all benchmarks were not necessarily ahead or behind. Now, how do we utilize all that data from that eighty-five benchmarks? We took a compensable factor score, I mentioned from that internal equity piece, combined with the data for those eighty-five benchmarks, conducted regression analysis, came up with predicted midpoints for every single classification. And that was our first starting point when we did individual slotting of classifications. That's how we use the data. At first, we said, how do, what do we want to do for a pay plan? Again, going back to the compensation philosophy, you still wanted an open range, you were already competitive. So we modified, or redesigned slightly the plan. We went from, we suggest going from the current fifty-three percent range bits, 'cause your peers on average are sixty-three percent, to sixty-five percent, more like your peers. And why sixty-five? Again, that's slightly above the peers. Um, it gives a little room for, and this was a discussion we had with the county, potentially giving, um, some other types of pay incentive, perhaps, as a thought, as an oceanal thought, for progressing salaries more in that range to the right. So you have enough room to do that.
Does that mean that only the maximum would grow, not the minimum being decreased, but only the maximum being increased? Correct?
Yes.
Say that again, Brown.
So if we increase the range to sixty-five percent from fifty-three, we would increase that by increasing the potential maximum pay, not reducing the potential minimum pay?
Right.
'Cause it could be achieved by going in both directions, right?
Yes.
So, thank you.
And then I, I mentioned on a couple of occasions, we individually then slotted every classification based on that structure into a pay grade, a range. Okay, so the second bullet there, some pay ranges increased when we did that, and some decreased. So we did decrease pay ranges when we saw that a classification was considerably, um, over, if you will, the competitive market. So we really kind of shored everything up, I'd say, if you want to take it like that. And, and then put the classifications at a, at a competitive position. All classifications that are competitive, that are in the bank plan, that are in competitive position. Um, and as you can see there in the third bullet of the grade changes, uh, quick count, that seventy-five increased, seventy-eight decreased, and put the number that, you know, stayed the same. And we didn't recommend any employee salary being decreased. But we did change a range for those that were ahead.
So I'm looking at this, um, so grades fifty through sixty are jobs that we currently have that pay less than thirty thousand dollars a year?
Grades fifty through sixty are grades that you currently have that at the minimum, if somebody was at the minimum.
Do we know what those positions are?
Certainly, mm-hmm, that's in a file that we have. I don't have it off the top of my head, but yes, we do have those positions.
I'm just curious if anybody knows now what they are.
No, but you'll be getting that information when we present the full pay plan.
I just thought we, um, didn't have jobs that paid that way anymore.
I'm sorry, what?
I didn't think we had jobs that paid that low anymore. I thought those were, hey.
You thought every job paid thirty thousand dollars at the least?
No, no, I thought, I thought we had gotten rid of, uh, the below living wage jobs. I thought that salaries were increased.
Um, but I don't think we ever said every job pays thirty thousand dollars at least. That's, I mean, that's different than the, I just don't think, the living wage policy doesn't guarantee thirty thousand dollars, does it? I don't think.
Mark was just saying that we don't believe that there's any grades below fifty-six.
Okay.
In the current workforce, but.
Okay.
Okay.
That answer, yeah.
Oh, that's, okay. So fifty-six is really, nothing's below fifty-six currently. Okay? Thank you.
Let me ask, when you say no, um, employee salary was recommended for decrease, to decrease, how do you handle it though, when you have an employee's salary that's well above the maximum of the range?
Typically, how that is handled is what, in comp and class terminology, there are red, we call red circle. So the salary, generally speaking, stays the same.
It's frozen.
It's frozen. Until such time as, you know, there's a study that says, oh, that range, for, for whatever reason, you change those ranges, that moves. Yes, that is absolutely the general comp and class.
But the way we have cola, they're gonna get an increase anyway every year, right?
With cola, the whole bands would move. So like you give two percent to the bottoms, the whole band would move two percent, and they employ, so basically the employee stayed static, the pay grade moved, was increased two percent.
He would not get that until he got back within the range.
Until you're back in the range.
Right.
If it took him three or four years.
Right, okay.
Get there, he'd have been getting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah.
'Cause the theory is you're actually overpaid.
Right.
Right. So frozen really means frozen, yeah.
Salary is frozen. Now, again, places do things differently of giving, um, you know, a lump sum. Some will give a cola, and some, if you had a, let's just say, ten, you had a, ten, pretend for ten, you had a cola and a merit-based, you know, part of your budget you gave us across the board and a, and a performance-based type of increase. Some of our clients will say, we want everybody to get that cola, so, you know, we'll, you know, we'll give them a lump sum for that cola. And some will even move them further beyond, most will not do that. But, and then the performance basis lump sum too. Some, so it varies, but frozen salaries is consistent, generally speaking, today, in today's world, if you will, put it that way. That would be what we would recommend. But you consider if you want to give a lump sum, which is not, doesn't affect the salary yearly, okay? All right, so we developed again multiple options, um, for implementing the new, um, plan, revised plan, and I'll call it, you know, landed on this one being the most appropriate in discussions with the county at this point in time, particularly, um, where you are with comp philosophy, et cetera. That you, that you do what we call bring employee salaries to the new minimums. Any employee salary that's below the new minimums, if a grade increased, your salary fell below that, that they would get an, an adjustment to get to that new minimum. Because to put the new plan in place, you want all salaries within that plan. On the bottom end, you definitely want all salaries in that plan. You don't want salaries below, below the minimum. So to just what I call turn this new system on, I call it kind of turning that system on, you would need at least to do this, which is just set those new salaries at least at those minimums. So it doesn't do anything, any other adjustments, any of those salaries in the court, you know, beyond that, it just brings those employees. We do a calculation, you know, of all the salaries and say who's below that, bring them to this. And that would be the annual salary cost is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one, for seventy-four employees as we calculated it today with the start of the month. Again, that doesn't.
Let me make sure, I'm, I'm making sure I'm getting this. So, so we're, are we, are you saying that there are currently some jobs that are paid below the minimum of their salary range within their job classification?
Some employees.
Some employees.
Individual salaries would be below what we proposed, yes.
That's probably where they were reclassified from a lower grade to a higher grade.
So their, their job classification changed, but then they didn't get the, the raise that should have gone with that other classification?
No, it's, it's putting the pay plan into effect. For instance, if they were at, um, fifty-six and she recommended they go to fifty-eight, that's a ten percent increase, and they may have just been at the starting range of fifty-six. You'd have to take them up to the first step on fifty-eight. And remember, she's got seventy-four, she said, or I forgot the exact number, remember where the, um, where the, um, range went up. That's typically where you're gonna find these people.
Okay, just stay with me for just a minute more, just to make sure I've got it right, right? So, but are you saying if we changed the floor for a band to, to a higher floor, then seventy-four people would need to be adjusted up to, to reflect that? Or are we saying that there's seventy-four people who are currently, based on existing bands?
They're not currently out of the range, they will be when you put this new plan.
If we put the plan into effect, thank you. Got it.
Yes.
And the seventy-four would.
Turn it on, you'd have.
You turn it on, then that happens, okay, got it.
Have to do that, because they fall out.
Thank you.
Because either we change, either we, it was a classification, we didn't change the title or anything, we just saw it was below in the market, needed to be brought up for the hierarchy, all that comparison. Or we saw that the individual needed to have a classification change, it can be any one of those things, but for whatever reason, they're, what we've said, that new classification should be now. We just simply look at all the individual salaries as, as a probable open minimum that we've recommended. Yes, no, and calculate the adjustment.
And that would only average a little over seventeen hundred dollars, right? About what you've got up there, man?
Sure, for employees, for employees, yeah.
I don't, thank you.
So while I talk.
I know we haven't, thank you, Mary. I did not commit that to memory, but we have.
Well, I've already told you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we have it in, we do our homework. Okay? So, now, that same, remember that assessment that we did for of, um, where your salary structure was in comparison to peers? We do this, we do what I call the after. The after picture is, okay, let's take, now that, those new ranges that we came up with, relate them in comparison to what we got from the data, and said if we were, we were analyzing the new implemented structure, where would that structure be? Now, remember, we aren't sitting here trying to, we aren't going from this point backward for individuals slotting, individual slotting, and then we do this calculation. So where we got was here, and it's averaging some things together too. So now your plan would be, not by intention necessarily, okay? But just slightly, I'm gonna call this slightly ahead, not much, but slightly ahead of market, but competitive. You know, kind of across all points. So that's basically us conducting a salary survey using the new data, new range data. That make sense? Okay? And then we also do this, which is that same assessment again of where the individual salaries would fall in the quartiles now, with that new plan implemented. And again, because of that stretching, if you will, of those salary ranges a bit, you're gonna have some of that in that second quartile, a little bit more in that second quartile, quite falling out of that third back into this. So you now have this, it's a little bit, you know, you're, you're comparing a structure of fifty-three percent range spreads to a structure that's, um, where you're doing the quartile analysis. So you can't exactly compare in that way, but this is how the, the individual salaries would fall now, on the whole. Okay? Next steps, um, we, as we see them, for the county, um, communicate study results to employees, review pay practices, revise as necessary, again, with whatever the compensation philosophy is, or provides and is. Of course, they should be fiscally responsible and competitive with peers. You are competing, um, in general, with much, I'm gonna call it much more flexible pay practices today in the public sector than probably existed twenty years ago. Where twenty years ago, I'd say, where the compensation philosophies were more aligned, where people started, I'm overgeneralizing a bit, but started generally at the minimum and progressed through. Now you may be competing with somebody saying, well, I can offer, you know, I can go work over here for five thousand dollars more. And sometimes I'll, a client will say that, and I'll say, is that because the structure isn't competitive? Or because they have a pay practice that allows them to give a more, a higher, um, salary at the starting salary? New hire salary practices. So those pay practices have an effect just as, you know, as much sometimes as the range does. Develop a plan to move to employee evaluation process linked to performance pay increase, if that's what you want to do. Develop an actual solid plan to do that, um, where you have consistency with evaluation, et cetera. Administer, maintain the new plan, make pay grade changes, adjustments as necessary. So we build these plans, and as you saw, it's really slightly ahead of the market now, to be good for at least probably three years, with some minor maintenance. So if you had a new, if you had a new position, you'd certainly have to assign a grade, that's part of the training we give to the HR staff. Or if you have a position that becomes less competitive in the market, and you think, oh, we've got to analyze this again, you might need to regrade that position, re-slot that position. If you do that maintenance, you don't have to. If you do that maintenance, you don't have to change, even with the cost of living increase across the board, you don't have to move that plan. So, plan should, could, should be good for probably about three years. Five years, every three to five years, we recommend a full comp and class study. We generally recommend a, a, what we call a compensation update after three years, just to see, does the plan need to move, shift some? We have, again, to prepare those reports, both draft and final, the revised job descriptions, and again, provide that training. Additional questions, comments?
So basically, we'll get those deliverables here shortly, and then we'll be ready to bring it to y'all to vote on whether or not to implement this new plan. We've adopted our resolution. And then, the way I'm used to administering these, is that pay plan is set by the board, nothing can change on it without a further resolution of the board. So for instance, if Margaret goes through and evaluates three other positions next year, that we maybe had turnover in, and so we're saying we probably are low on those, she would come back to you and we would ask you to pass another resolution which amends this pay plan. So, nobody in administration can adjust this pay plan up to an inclusion to county management, has to be done by the board. And that's how you keep, um, control of the pay plan.
It's brought back to.
It's all brought back before you. It's all brought back before you, you will adopt it. And we will also be looking at some changes to the pay plan, as she was talking about, about how to implement the plan. We're in the process of reviewing that, and we'll do the same thing. All of that is in the personnel policies, all of those have been adopted by ordinance by you, and the only way they can be amended is by ordinance by you. So that's locked down.
So, um, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. I'd like to just, I know, I'd like to just kinda hear more about the, kinda the, you know, so like you're saying, this is, some of these are, what's your philosophy around compensation strategy, right? So, so if we are gonna bring in this performance based, uh, element, give that more emphasis than we have in the past, I'd like to just hear more about that. And it's something I'm certainly open to, I mean, it kind of, it sort of has an intuitive appeal, right? Someone really, you know, goes above and beyond, you know, encouraging that, recognizing that. I mean, there's a lot to like about the idea. But I, you know, but it is, I don't know, what do you see as the pros and cons though about it? Cause it, you know, I guess just, you know, a lot of businesses do this, and I think in the business context, there's a lot of reasons for that, but it's less common in public sector organizations, isn't that right? And, and I don't know, I mean, just in terms of some of the different, is it something that you would see being applied to one hundred percent of the workforce? Or just certain, are certain jobs more naturally, um, you know, able to be evaluated in some, using some of those criteria, or in others not? Or, I don't know, I'd just like to hear, it seems like a big change, so I'd just like to hear more of the thinking around that.
So the clients now that, and I do, I work primarily, so I'm gonna speak, and again, a little bit of a generalization, I realize, you know, but work primarily in cities and counties across the United States, but primarily, you know, in this area, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida certainly. We're definitely seeing more move toward performance based increases in various manners. Some have a five-year plan to do that, okay, which is perfectly fine. But def, I'd say more are moving towards that. Is it all, the whole entire structure? There, there, I can guarantee there will be people who would say, well, it won't work, it can't work, it does work, it doesn't work, whatever. Of course, I under, we understand all that. There are things that you have to put into place to make it work well, consistency of the training. There's what I would call normalization or revaluation of rating. Mary and I need to, thank you, Mary, for letting me, Mary and I would need to, if we're both supervisors, be evaluating the same manner to have consistency for that to work well, otherwise you start getting the, you know, Nancy likes somebody, so she's just giving whatever, here's all the reasons not to do it. There are methods to help so that we are evaluating the same way. So all that discussion aside, more are moving towards that. Some more aggressively, some are saying, you know, we have a five-year plan to do that. And it goes back to, again, that comp, comp philosophy, why would you want to? Again, it's what is important to us? How long people have been here? I know you have, you know, longevity, you know, how long people have been here? Tenure generally, generally would equate to higher level performance, but it doesn't always, you know? So, but it's what do you, what does the county value? Determine those things, we wanna see that, we value people performing differently, we want to differentiate. I would go from the, you know, just kind of a brainstorming, what do you want to, what do you want to reward? How do you wanna progress? And then come up with, now that's what I wanna go to. And it's probably a five-year plan because for right now, we've gotta phase out this, we've gotta do this, we wanna still, you know, compensate for what have you. Some will do, many more are going more towards, I should say, of those that are going towards, let me correct that, performance based, perhaps a across-the-board and a portion of performance based, maybe not the total increase. I'd see that, I see that more in the public sector. But there are ways to do performance based. Union County, for example, has a performance base, where they have a goal of trying to reach stated goal of employees with performance based increases, one that's been in place for several years, of trying to get employees to them to point at a certain amount of time. That's, that's more aggressive, you know, more, sort of more aggressive, whatever, you know, fine than I see generally speaking, but again, all sorts of ways of doing that. It's, it's that, where should salaries be? I think we should, you know, reward this, I think we should reward that. A sixty-five percent range, if you adopt this new plan, I think we should give more, more incentives. People get additional certification that benefits the county as well as it benefits me as an employee. We wanna give something more there. That's some reason for us saying, we thought those should be sixty-five percent, to give you some way there to have that. So it's really kind of saying, here's, here's everything we think we would want, collect if we decide what that is, put in place a plan to do that. But yes, we're seeing more performance based.
I think, um, it's true, a question of articulation and having concrete standards. I mean, we've just come off one county manager for a very long time who would give people performance based very big raises by just changing their job title. And so that.
That wasn't performance based.
Well, who was in, who was out, that kinda thing, so it was very arbitrary. And then you had other employees who stayed in that same job classification and, and getting the COLA. So we've come from a very unfair arbitrary system. So I would think before we do anything like that, everything would be really well articulated and, like you said, training.
And you, you touched on something, it's so true. Coming from the corporate world and where we had performance based, although I came from an organization that went in on steroids when it comes to incentives, but that's another question. But when it comes to performance based though, where it's successful and where it really works is when you have the training. Because the key with performance based, if you're gonna be successful, you've got to have the train, the training, and everybody's got to be consistent. Because what I saw in managers working for me, that was a serious problem at one time, is because I looked at, we weren't consistent, you know? We had some that were doing it the way it should be done, others they were doing it, but still, you know, based on who they liked or whatever. But the key there though, at every level, I think, is you've gotta do the training if we're going. And you can't do it overnight, it's gonna take a while.
I, I was gonna make that very point.
Yeah, you, you can't do it.
The last three jurisdictions I was in, we, we went to performance based evaluation and pay. And Al's exactly right, you've got to have a well-defined program, you've got to have the employees have the training, particularly the supervisory people that are gonna be evaluating people, and it, and it's gotta be a very clear-cut process, and there's gotta be review steps in it. For instance, jurisdiction I was last in, believe it or not, our HR director would read every evaluation. And if your evaluation didn't match up with the amount of money you were giving them, it went back to you and said, this isn't right, explain it, redo it. Or if they didn't do a good job on the evaluation. So you do have to have those processes in place. I would just say that for your situation, I don't see being able to do this in less than eighteen months. And, and let me explain why. You're, you're not gonna have a new manager on board probably till after the first of the year. And they should have input into, uh, developing this system. Once they get here, then we have put in an interim HR director, so they need to fill that slot. And obviously, in, in interviewing for both those positions, we should be asking about what's your philosophy on pay? Should we be going to this type of system? And how would you do it? How would you, exactly, how would you, where have you done it before? And if they've done it, they ought to be able to lay it out for you exactly how they've done it. And, so, once you get those people in place, now you're looking at the spring, at the earliest. And it would take at least a year. So I would think you're not looking at doing this for, certainly not this fiscal year, and probably not the next fiscal year, it would be the year after is when you would start.
Yeah, cause I think, George, eighteen months would be a risk where we are now. I don't think you could do it now.
Yeah, it would, cause really what, what it amounts to is they would have like fifteen months to get it all together. And, and they may, and if not, then you bump it another year. But it needs to be fully developed before you unroll it.
And I think employees have, faith has to be restored in employees. I mean, they, they've come from a climate of fear.
Right.
They weren't allowed to talk to commissioners, they weren't allowed, I mean, it was just based on fear and retribution. And that takes some time to reestablish trust.
Well, and, and those year and a half, two years, hopefully we're doing that. But your point's well made on that. But, but that's, that's basically how it would operate. I guess, let me just give you a little bit of background, uh, cause you're probably thinking, well, how does this work through the budget process? Typically what would happen is the manager would make, you know, the manager makes a budget proposal to you every year. So typically what would happen is the manager, in, in my budget message to you, I would say, I'm recommending that you have a salary and benefits pool of X percent. Let's just use for, say, two and a half percent, okay? The way we would do it in the budget, to keep it simple for Eric and finances, you don't diffuse that throughout the budget. And the reason for that is, I don't know if you're gonna approve two and a half percent. You may wanna do more, you may wanna do less. If we put it throughout every department, if you change it, they've got a tremendous job to backtrack there. What I typically do is stick it in a contingency line item, the whole lump sum. Then once you vote on it, then he's authorized to go in there and move that money from that contingency line item into each one of those line items to handle the pay and various benefits. So that's how you get the pool of money into the budget, okay? Now, what we did is, um, we would wait until the board had voted on the budget, cause until you approved the pool, the department heads don't know how much money they've got to work with. So you can't, you can't really do it earlier than after, until the board votes, so that's June, right? So then what we would do is, we would give them about two months to evaluate their people. Typically, our raises would go into effect in August or September. But you've gotta have time to go through the evaluation process, and there's two, there's two theories on that. One is you can do it at anniversaries, which I do not recommend, or you can do it all at once. Reason I don't recommend anniversaries is people who have anniversaries in the first half of the year are gonna get the money, and the people in the back half of the year, it's gonna be, oh, I'm sorry, the money's gone. What, what we do is we give them a spreadsheet, we give each department head a spreadsheet that has all of his people on there, tells you what they're making now, what the pay grade is, and then, and then it already has the calculation in there that you have this amount of money. And every time you take some of that and give somebody a raise, that pot of money's going down. So what they've got to do is fit in what they're doing within that pool. It forces them to have to make tough decisions on the front end. And if they come in and say, well, everybody gets two and a half percent, then he and I are gonna have a talk, and it's not gonna be pleasant, because I'm gonna tell him this is not a COLA, go back and do it. So, uh, that's how you do that plan, that's how you would stick it in your budget. That's how it would work out in the real world, and that's when employees would get their raises. But there's no way to delay, I mean, there's no way to get raised July one because it's all triggered by what does the board approve as the pool.
But I, it's like just been a small business owner for about thirty years. I had that for a long time, performance based, because the employees, if they produce, that's performance.
Right.
The way I did it, it wasn't, some of it asked for a raise, well, they want a fifty cent raise, well, it, it had actually cut their pay, so. Most of mine, I did it at Christmas time with the dinner and a bonus for the ones that did it right, then the raise to go along with it, but I had to see what the company added before I could do that. So, you know, it's, I didn't have a company that I can go to the taxpayer and say, give me some more money so I can get raises. I had a company that I ran, I looked at the money, my wife looked at the money, and we had this, and everybody that worked for us got a bonus, period. It might've been smaller for some, but it was bigger for the other ones that really did perform. And that's, I liked the idea there, period.
Well, and, and what this also does is, this gets your, this gets your pay back into the normal budgetary process. And what you're doing now is, is that whatever the CIP is in December, you're giving an automatic COLA in April, we haven't even finished the budget, we don't know if we, you know, what we can and can't do yet. So what I'm recommending to you, as you know, will be on your agenda, is to do away with that COLA. The other reason for that is, you can't go to a performance based plan if you're, if you've already determined you're gonna do it as a COLA instead of using merit increases. I've gotta have that pool of money to give the merit increases. Does that make sense?
And you have to know what your pools wanna be.
Right. And I can't do that, and to me, that's all part of looking at the total budget. And that's why all of this should be, in my view, should be part of the total budget.
Well, your deal, my deal was in November, your deal's a little earlier than my deal would be in December. You know, it's in June because that's when the budget turns.
Right.
But it's the same thing, November or June.
That's right.
It, it all works the same.
So did I give y'all a fairly good explanation of how in the real world that would work in the evaluation system?
Other questions? The one other, the one other one that I would just, say, I'd like to get more information on too, going back to the question Commissioner Frost asked earlier. You know, to, to understand the, the different pay classifications for the, you know, for the lower-paid employees, we have done things to try to get pay raises there. So I'd like to, I'd like a better understanding of, you know, where, where are we really at with that today? So I'd like to understand that. And, you know, just thinking about the different pieces that go into the compensation philosophy, you know, I mean, part of it, just, I'm just one commissioner, but I would speak up for you. And I think we do wanna, you know, have the philosophy that people who work full-time for Buckland County should be able to afford to live in this community, you know? And it is, it is a little, it is, you know, we've got this great, beautiful mountains living here, but it is more expensive than other places. So, um, I think we've, we've intentionally tried to do some things to make progress there, but I think there's more to be done. And so I, I would really like to get more detailed information on that as well, and, and think about, you know, what do we, you know, and we're not gonna do all, it all in one, in one budget year, but like, what do we wanna get done over the next two years in terms of continuing to strengthen that, that piece of the compensation?
And there are methods to do those kinds of.
Can we find out if they, if the lowest paid ever got the one and a half percent rate? If they were supposed to get sixteen?
Yes, they did.
They did, for sure they did.
I'll go back and pull the dice.
Any other questions or comments for now? We've got a board of, go free, thank you, that was very.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very informative, yeah.
Thank you, Dave. Sorry, you won't go ahead.
I will be happy to.
Does anybody need to take a break, or you won't go ahead?
I wanna keep going and just, if people need. I want to keep going and just, if people need to take a, you know, quick break, we'll pretty deal with it. All right, keep rolling.
All right, so my presentation is, hold on. Now, where's the, oh, there it is.
It's a secret message.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, you all ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, I am here to help present some information about our benefit comparisons. I'm going to talk about health plan, and then the county manager is going to talk about our health plan. So when we were comparing benefits, once again, we just, this is more of a graphical illustration of the counties that we compared to, which are basically the top ten most populated, popu, top ten counties plus, with population, plus the city of Asheville and the state of North Carolina. So the first thing that we benchmarked was 401K contributions. Buncombe County is clearly gives the highest 401K contribution with all of our peer counties. As you can tell, there's quite a split. State law does mandate that you have to give five percent to law enforcement agents, to law enforcement officers. So that's why you see a lot of places at five percent. We also have some of those give matches, and when you're talking about a 401K, is that, that if you give one percent to your 401K, the county will also kick in one percent for your 401Ks. There are a lot of different kind of ways that they have that set up. I also wanted to give you all some comparison, is that how did Buncombe County get to the eight percent? And that this eight percent was not something that happened in the last, you know, three or four years. This actually was in 2006, so it's been that way since 2006, and has remained unchanged. So as you can see, we're definitely high in that area. So this is just another way of looking at it with the graph. Where you can tell, most of the peer counties, the majority of them are at the five percent.
And just to make sure I understand this clearly, that means if the employee contributes eight percent of their salary, county will match that?
No, we actually just give a straight eight percent, so we give eight percent of your salary, we put it in your 401K.
Regardless of whether...
And then the employee has the option of contributing up to whatever the federal guidelines are in terms of, from a tax standpoint. See, most, I think, most people...
Okay, thank you for clearing.
Sorry, don't want to get in there. Yeah, there's no match.
So they don't have to contribute anything?
No, most employees have eight percent or put in their 401K whether they want it or not, that the county does that. And that's money that they can't touch until retirement. It's kind of...
Who doesn't want it?
Why, but it's basically there for when they retire.
Okay, understood. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Now, 2006, this was put in, correct?
That's when we got up to eight percent, yes.
Eight percent. Was that voted on by the commissioners?
It was. That was in the budget. That was in budget ordinances. So each one of those increases was voted on by the Board of Commissioners.
Chairman Ramsey.
So, just any other questions? I did want to try to go back and research that. That wasn't, that wasn't something that was, that's, you know, staff did or anything like that, that was voted on.
This would be a good time too. Let me interject this, Kurt.
Yes, sir.
Some of what you're going to see here today, some of these things, if the courts review, treat them as if they're part of a retirement system, we really can't change that. You cannot change it for current employees. You could change it going forward, for new hires. Some of these, you could change immediately. And so, we've done research, Kurt's done research on that, and we've also had outside counsel look at it. And before we come to you with any of these, we'll be running it by the UNC School of Government as well to determine if, in fact, we can or can't make any adjustments to it.
And usually, that term's vested rights. And I remember presenting you all in three-on-threes where I gave you all sort of an overview of all the benefits as to who's technically vested, who's entitled to it but hasn't actually vested it, and who's not going to get it. We've broken those down for each benefit.
You're not going to make that distinction in the presentation?
Not today. This is more of a general overview as to what our benefits are and where we are compared to our peer counties.
When we come back to you with some options to look at, then we'll drill down into the specifics of what we can and can't do. And sometimes, you might be able to legally do it, but it's probably not something we'd recommend you do.
Right. So, right, so some of these things are, in some ways, not really on the table for us to change very much anyway.
I would say, I would say in my mind here, this is not on the table for current employees, but you might want to look at changing it for future hires. But I don't, I don't think, you know, in that sense, our current employees, this is part of their overall compensation. And some of these may have been put in in lieu of a COLA that year.
And Margaret correctly put it wrong, but two of them were, at least two percentages on the 401K were given to employees in lieu of, that year they didn't give a COLA.
Which is why, which is why I would be very reluctant to do anything about it with current employees. But I do think you could look at it in terms of future employees, because clearly, we're out of the, you know, we're out of the mainstream on where everybody is right now.
But I also want to point out too, that this is probably when people are saying, "Hey, do you want to come work for Buncombe County?" This is probably one of the main things that people look at and say, "Yes, I do." So just to put that out, that I know a lot of people have said that, you know, when they were deciding on whether to come to the employee, or to come work for the county, this was, this was a factor in their decision-making. All right. So, all right. Technical glitch. So the next thing we look at is term life insurance, and I want to emphasize the word "term life insurance." So each, so Buncombe County provides every employee, or every full-time employee with a term life insurance policy of $30,000. The employee does not have to pay any money for that. If the employee wants additional coverage, they pay for that out of their salary. So when comparing us to other counties, you see the two counties don't give any term life insurance. One's at $5,000, two are at $10,000, and then you have some that are at salary. And when we say at salary, there are two things. Number one, they give you the term life insurance as to what your salary is, or they say, "We will offer you term life insurance up to a max salary." So they may say, "We'll give you term life insurance up to your salary, up to $90,000." So those were two. And then, one that gives you 1.5, 1.5 times your insurance. So in that one, we're sort of in the middle with everybody. And these policies are only effective, so once you leave Buncombe County or leave employment in Buncombe County, you don't, this policy's not something that you can take with you or anything like that.
And we'll stress, this is term life.
Yeah, I tried to say.
That's ridiculous.
I tried to say that, so. But what I also want to do though is also, some of the other things that kind of is with this is that if the employee desires additional insurance, they can purchase it. And one of the other great things about this is, a lot of times, it's guaranteed issue. So people with health conditions that they normally wouldn't be able to get health, get insurance for, or would have to pay a pretty penny, they can get it. It's guaranteed issue.
Kurt?
Yes, sir.
On that issue, I took it, because of my age, I didn't take it because I was sick. And I took, I bumped mine to the $100,000, and I pay the difference, okay? But now that I'm getting older, it keeps, I keep paying more, but it's going down.
Right. Well, also, they limit, they cap, that the older you get, they cap the amount of insurance that you can get per year. So unfortunately, yes, yes, but it's not just you. It's, it's everybody. So. Next thing I wanted to talk about is annual leave, okay? So, because that's something that also people look at. So when you're looking at how many days off Buncombe County gives its employees, a majority of our, or forty-five percent of our workforce is on this, where it's, basically, you get ten days, but we put the plus two because we have what's called PTO, which is basically just personal time off, you know, so that you can use that for, you know, taking care of, like, if you have an appointment or you need to take your kids to school or something like that. So those are really an extra two days, and we thought it would be important to count those. So as you can see, we're pretty much in line with most of what the other governments now. We also have a graduated wait. So employees that were hired before, early in 2002, they have a higher accrual rate than it's between 2002 and 2011. There's, we have three different accrual rates, but this is the most current one that new hires would fall under. Does that make sense? So the older employees are earning at a higher rate than the newer employees. That's one of those things where you change it moving forward.
Can you, can you just explain again about the selling of...
That is a great segue.
Thank you.
All right. So one of the things we also look is, is leave sale policy. And what leave sale is, is basically, that allows you to take your annual leave, or your excess annual leave, and that allows you to sell it and basically turn it into cash. As you can see, based on this chart, almost nobody does that. The only one that does that is Mecklenburg County, and they cap that to forty hours. Buncombe County right now is wide open, and you can sell as much leave as you can, up to a maximum of 320 hours, which is basically two years of leave. Now, not every employee has that, but a lot of us employees do have a large, or are carrying a bunch of days off that we could sell.
Now, would this fall into a category of something we can stop?
Yes. Yes.
Can we stop it and then never talk about it again?
Yeah, that's all up to you all. But I just wanted you to say, and I also have to say that this gradually, we had it, and it's gradually changed over the years too.
What was it before?
It used to be that you could sell...
Vacation in Hawaii.
That up to eight, what was it? It was...
You had to leave a balance of forty.
You had to have forty hours, and you could sell, and you had to sell in eight-hour increments.
Yes.
Yeah, and the other thing about this policy, you were talking about equity among employees. This really favors your hiring, your higher-paid employees. If you think about it, if you get, if you've been here a while and you get four weeks, you've just got another month's salary. And if you're making a large salary, that's big money.
I mean, hypothetically, if somebody recently retired, how much money would they have gotten from this? It was like...
Well, now, let me, let me go over that. If somebody retires, whatever, our leaves, even if we fire somebody, annual leave is earned, and you have to pay it out.
But the selling part?
The selling part, you didn't have any, like you said, is there a cap?
I can try to address that. Yes. We normally allow you, under our personnel ordinance, to carry essentially two years of leave, so your balance. So if we go back to this thing, days a year, so suppose I have less than two years of service and I have a balance of ten. So basically, I could carry twenty days. If I have more than twenty days on April 1st, any, or no, February 1st, thank you, sorry. February 1st, those days get converted into sick leave. So basically, we try to cap that liability, where you can only carry two years of whatever your accrual, your maximum accrual is. Now, what normally happens is that when somebody retires, you're right, or separates, we have to pay that full amount out. And most, all these other places that we showed you, they all allow you to sell up to a certain point. Our maximum is 320 hours.
I understand. I mean, they're still saying zero, but you're saying the other places can't sell.
Well, but it's, but the issue is, is when can you sell it? Almost everybody says, you could, I mean, we'll buy it when you leave, when you're separated, so when you retire.
They're only going to pay you out when you leave employment, is what they're saying. You cannot sell, leave.
But the ultimate amount would still be the same, right? It's just they only get it when they leave, but the amount would still be the same.
Well, the other thing you got to look at is, in addition to this, you got to look at, what are you going to cap it at? Because you really do want employees to take some vacation every year.
Well, right. I mean, I mean, because that's the philosophy, right, is you want people to not get burned out. You know, take care of yourself, have fun, enjoy lives, you know, but, so I don't know. I mean, the whole idea of monetizing the vacation doesn't, you know, doesn't really resonate with me.
It's a disincentive to doing the things you just talked about.
A lot of employers say, "Here's your vacation. Use it or lose it," right? And that's just, you know...
And Eric, Eric has said something really important. It's an internal control too.
Correct.
You step out of your role for a week, so most people are your role for a week. It's an internal control.
That's why, in banking, that's why it was required.
I was going to say, my wife worked in banking.
Yeah, I had to. It's part of internal control. And if we didn't take our vacation, I got up near the end, I had six weeks' vacation, what I didn't take, I lost.
Yeah. I mean, my, just, you know, I mean, I'm not going to...
I wish I had been paid to be persuaded around this.
I think we should give, you know, I think we should be generous in our vacation policies, but I think employees should use them, right? Just to stay healthy, not, you know, everyone needs to recharge regularly. But just banking it and getting paid for it, I don't know. To me, that's not the purpose of it.
I think y'all can see, this is one we've kind of wrote in. We're the oddball album, right?
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that Eric has pointed out something, and I want to make sure. When I say two years of accrual, what I'm really meaning is that you get twenty days a year. So your max accrual would be forty days, not two years.
Yeah, we know it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't thinking like people are having, you know, seven hundred and some-odd days worth of leave. But this is something that I think that y'all should address and look at. There are a lot of ramifications. So once again, we just kind of graphed it, so you can kind of see how we compare to the other.
That's something all right there.
So the last thing, one of the last fringe benefits that we wanted to point out is longevity. So a bunch of places don't offer it all, or haven't, or never have offered it. Then you have these places that offered it, but then stopped it. So basically, when you look at Gaston County, employees who were hired before 2002 are still getting longevity, but everybody hired after that is not. And the same is with Guilford, Mecklenburg, and Cumberland. Now, the places that offer it, so Buncombe County, we offer it, your first year here, you get $100. So we offer it immediately. You get something. Catawba County, you have to stay five. You don't get any longevity until you've been there for five years. Forsyte County, you don't get any until you've been there seven years, excuse me, and then the state is ten years. Okay, so that's what those numbers sort of mean. But they do give longevity. And it's all in different, and there's many different, some give a lump sum amount, others give a percentage of salary. We, Buncombe County, give a percentage of your salary.
And as we, as we look at these, this to me ties in with the whole philosophy of how you're going to pay. If you're moving to a pay-for-performance plan, you don't really need to do longevity. It's almost a conflicting philosophy, because longevity says, the longer you're here, the better employee you are. Pay-for-performance says, not necessarily. Let's evaluate you and see where you go with it. Secondly, if you don't, if you were to cut it off, and I want to stress this, we're not talking about doing it, doing away with it for those who already have. I don't want people in this room thinking that we would be talking about doing away with it. But if we were to set it like they've done, and set the ones in the middle, and say, "From this date forward, new hires don't get it." That also will help you get some additional money, which you then can put into your merit and COLA pools to pay for a pay-for-performance plan, which is, I think, where we want to move towards. So, does everybody follow that?
Yeah.
I got that.
All right. Now, this is, now, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wood and let him...
Feel free to chime in.
Do you want me to click for you?
Okay. This first chart, I wanted to go over with you first, because I want you to understand the magnitude of the problem here. We currently, in 1919, we spent $26,718,000. This is just the claims. We have a self-insured insurance plan, health insurance plan. So we also pay a TPA, which is a third-party administrator, in our case, Blue Cross, to administer the plan. You also have what's called stopgap insurance, which is, somebody has a really high claim, or stop loss student. We're able to...
Or stop loss student. We're able to stop the loss at that point and then that secondary insurance policy kicks in. Okay? Everybody following that? And that protects you from having one or two major claims that kill your plan. So, other than that, then we pay the claims as they come in, but now people have to match their. Their copays, deductibles, out-of-pockets and all of that. And we're gonna get into all of those components as we go through this. But here's, here's the thing I wanted to get across here.
Oh, sorry.
So. You know. Kurt and Heather have gone back and looked at some historical data. We're averaging about a ten percent increase. In medical costs. Now that doesn't mean the claims are, that the. Claim, that the number of claims have gone up necessarily. It means the cost of them has gone up. And as y'all know, medical inflation alone's been eight to ten percent a lot of these years. So unless something fundamentally changes. In the medical insurance arena. That's probably what we're looking at. And that is what we've been looking at over the past few years. So. The next thing I wanna do is compare that to, well, what is our revenue growth rate been in order to pay for all of this? And that's this line. And it's been roughly a two percent revenue growth in your general fund. I will tell you, that's about, that's normal. These numbers are what basically I had in Wayne County. So this is not unusual. This is not unique to Buncombe County. This is what all of us. Are facing and it's what every business is facing, every other government. Everybody's having to deal with this. So what I wanna distress to you is. We had them go up ten years. And ten-year difference is your revenues will have gone from twenty-six, seven, thirty-two million, five sixty-nine. Our problem is expenditures will have gone to sixty-nine, two ninety-nine, six fifty-five. That's a thirty-six million dollar gap. And our general fund right now is three hundred and sixteen million dollars. Put that into context for. So our health insurance is costing us roughly about nine to ten percent now.
But this is also saying that the health insurance. Business is not gonna improve in ten years. It's gonna stay as bad as it is now. I think it's gonna improve, but that's just.
Well, what my recommendation would be is plan for the worst and then if it gets better, you can adjust. But I think you gotta plan for the worst. So, I wanted to stress that to you. That's what we're looking at. You wanna hit, no, you've done that. These are our, these are the three plans we have right now. And I'm gonna let Kurt go through those, cause you're more familiar with them. You wanna?
Okay, well, the first plan we have is the standard plan and I think that that has about fifty-seven percent of the employees. And all of the retirees. That policy, it was basically grandfather one-one, two thousand and ten. So it's basically everybody that was hired before January first, two thousand and ten is on the standard plan. It's our richest plan. It has very low. Deductibles. It has very low out-of-pocket maximums and the co-insurance is five ninety-five, which basically means. After you pay your deductible, that's basically the first money that comes out of your pocket. The county pays ninety-five percent and you pay five percent of the expenses. Until you get to your out-of-pocket maximum, which in this case is seven hundred and fifty dollars for an individual or fifteen hundred dollars for a family.
And I just, I just wanna make sure y'all understand. That is a very rare plan. Very rare.
So then in two thousand and ten, we, we, the county instituted the buy-up plan, which has higher premiums. For employees that gives fairly comparable insurance. The buy-up plan. Is sort of the middle, the middle tier. And then we have the core plan, which you can see is a seventy-thirty. And has higher deductibles and out-of-pocket. The things that are the same for all the plans are the copayments, or not the copayments, but the copay. I'm sorry. The copayments for physicians or for specialists, they're all the same. For primary care, you pay twenty-five dollars. For specialists, you pay forty dollars. In addition, the money that you pay for pharmacy, all the copayments for pharmacy are the same too. Across the board. And also the money that you pay for urgent care or. Emergency room. Those are all the same. So really the big differences between our plans are the deductibles. Out-of-pocket maximums and co-insurance. And we'll get into that a little bit later.
Okay. One other point I wanted to stress is your retirees. Get to go on the standard plan.
Yes, if you have twenty, well, it depends on when you were hired, but technically if you have twenty years of service, you come on. Whatever plan you're on and like, and pretty much all of them are on. Standard plan, but also the county pays their premiums. So all your retirees on individual plans. Do not pay any premium, or do not pay any premiums until they reach sixty-five and then they come off the plan and go on to Medicare. Okay, so.
And so, a lot of them will be on this ninety-five-five.
So one of the, so when you're thinking numbers, think like. One thousand, four hundred and fifty people are actual employees. And then add another three hundred, as, those are additional subscribers and those are the retirees. So you're looking at about seventeen. Hundred fifty people total on the plan.
Can I ask a question? That's where we're at there.
Uh, Mr. Wood, Commissioner President, please.
In this plan. Like bumped, that you could keep your children until they're twenty-six, what did that do to the plan?
And that was mandated by the Affordable Care Act that you had to continue insurance for dependents until they're twenty-six. I mean, clearly we had more claims. I don't have exact numbers as to. How many they were, but generally the younger you are, the less, the, the cheaper it is to insure. So it's, you more look, you're not, kids aren't the ones that are, that are causing you a ton of costs. It's. It's normally the, the older you get, the more expensive it gets, unfortunately, so.
Okay. Alright, next we looked at healthcare premiums. This is the premium for employees only. Okay? And so, I can't read it from there. I might have to read it from here. This, uh, let me, let me go through a couple of these. The CDHP is a consumer-driven health plan. You may have heard of them as a high deductible plan. So it's where you have higher deductibles. But then you, you give benefits on the, on the other end to encourage people to go to that high deductible plan. PPO is the standard plan. That's the pervert provider organization. So, we're with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which means we're in that Blue Cross Blue Shield network. Which typically saves you around forty to forty-two percent versus the retail price, somewhere in that neighborhood. Okay, the ACO is accountable care organization, which is a restricted network. So thirty-six percent of Buncombe County plan subscribers are enrolled in employee-only coverage. So we wanted to give you that number. So here's the monthly premiums. You'll see some of these are really low. Second quartile is where we're at, at forty-three dollars. For our core plan and then our PPO plans are fifty-four and seventy-six. So in terms of employee only. We're actually higher than a lot of these places. And that's because some jurisdictions will pay. Close to a hundred percent or a hundred percent on the employee, but they don't pay anything on the dependent coverage. So you have to look at all this in tandem, okay?
So that's what the, like the forty-three dollars, that's what the employee pays per month.
That's right. And you'll see that some of those don't charge anything, because their plan says, we'll pay for the employee. But then the employee pays a bigger percentage of the dependent coverage. Okay? Okay. Alright, so the next one is healthcare premiums. This shows how we, how we fit in there. Okay? So again. We're actually somewhat on the higher end on that. Meaning our employees pay more than what a lot of these other places pay. Now we'll get to the family coverage. So this is healthcare premiums for family. And this is where we don't look good at all. We charge less for family coverage than anybody. And you can just go down that list and see what diff, what people are charging. And we broke it down between employee plus spouse and then employee plus children. Does anybody have any question on those? And those are monthly premiums. So you can see we're at the top of the first quartile. If you look at the fourth quartile. Union County, I mean, they charge their employees over a thousand dollars per month. For employee, for dependent coverage. Most of them are in the three hundred to six hundred dollar range, the second and third quartile. Anybody have any questions on that? And then this shows it again. So again, we're low and then that's, that's everybody else going across. So then we look at deductibles. And this is what you pay. You know, before the plan starts kicking in. At the eighty-twenty, or in the case of the standard plan, at the ninety-five-five. So you can see we're in the first quartile on that. So our individual deductible is three hundred dollars. Family deductible is six hundred dollars for the standard plan. The buy-up is four hundred and seven fifty. And the core is six fifty and a thousand. Those are considerably lower than what you see in these other plans. So that's the deductible. This is, again, this is how it charts out. And what we've got in here is the yellow is in network single. And the gray is in network family. So we're giving you both of those going across. Does anybody have any questions on that? So the next thing we're gonna look at is out-of-pocket and max. And what that is, is that. So when, when you have a plan, you pay your deductible. You know, say you go to the hospital, you pay your deductible. Then you start paying, the plan pays, if you're in an eighty-twenty plan. Dollar for dollar, the plan pays eighty percent. You pay twenty percent. And that's your deductible until you reach what's called an out-of-pocket maximum. And that's what we're gonna talk about next, okay? So, and once you reach your out-of-pocket ma, uh, max, then the plan picks up one hundred percent. Of the cost. Does everybody follow that? Okay, so. You're on out-of-pocket. I'm having trouble.
Do you want me to go back?
No, I got it. Okay, so the out-of-pocket. Just a couple of comments. And I think I just covered that. That's what you pay before the insurance plan covers all expenses at a hundred percent. As well as the cap and what an individual or family pays per plan year. So as you can see. Again, we have the richest plan on that, out of all of them. And. City of Asheville is at forty-five hundred and ten-five. For the, now that is a high deductible plan. We don't have one of those yet. But one of the things we're gonna seriously consider is whether to offer that as. An alternative plan that people can choose. This is not something you force them into. It's. When they go through enrollment, they can decide. Do I wanna go with this standard plan or do I wanna go with a high deductible plan? Which is, which is why we need to have this discussion now so we're ready in October. Asheville's base, which is their plus PPO, they're at forty-five hundred and ten-five. Our standard, well, take the core, we're at nineteen hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred. So there's a marked difference between us and the city on that. I guess the other major one in terms of North Carolina would be right here, State of North Carolina Core Plan, forty-three eighty-eight. Thirteen thousand, one sixty-four. So you can see, we're extremely low. So that's the out-of-pocket max. Next thing, this just shows it in chart form. Where we're at. Anybody have any questions on that? So when you reach that max. What that means is, is that people who are paying more of that maximum, they're paying more of the claim. Before it shifts back where we're paying one hundred percent of. Alright, the next component we wanna look at is healthcare. This is physician copays. And the quartiles are based on the primary care copay. So we have two lists here, primary physician. And specialist, but she's ranked them based on primary care. As you can see there, we're pretty much in the second quartile based on the primary care. Based on specialist. You know, we'd, we'd be in either the first or the second quartile there. And then you see there's some at fifty, sixty, some at ninety-four and seventy there. On the primary care. We're low compared to what a lot of places are at today. And I think we all know, a visit to a doctor's office today, these don't begin to touch what that is. And here's the copays in bar graph form. So that's where we stack up there. Does anybody have any questions on that? The next component we wanna look at is emergency and urgent care copays. One of the issues here is if you don't have your payment for the emergency room high enough. Some people will go to the emergency room instead of going to urgent care. And an emergency room today can be between seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. So that's what it's costing us. And then they're paying a hundred and fifty dollars. So what you've got to do when we look at this is we need to incentivize people. To use urgent care if at all possible. Now, if urgent care isn't available, we understand and they got no choice. They go to the emergency. But we need to have a financial incentive to get people. To use urgent care and not the emergency. And I think you can see there, we're among the lowest on both urgent care. Which I think is a good thing, cause I think you wanna incentivize people to go to urgent care. And, but the emergency room is low. And we need to take a look at that. Okay, next one.
Is he moving?
Go ahead. I'm going backwards. No, I got it. Are we? You on copays now?
My stroke.
Okay, this, this, so the next thing is now I wanna talk about prescriptions. Generics, there's two categories or tiers. Same active ingredients as brand name, in other words FDA approved. But different active ingredients from the brand name medications. So what we're looking at, all of these are generic drugs for thirty-day supply. Okay? You'll see that we don't charge anything with generic drugs. Nothing.
For some, we do have a second tier which is ten dollars.
Yeah, and a se, yeah, you're right. Second tier with ten dollars. But, um, so I think you can see we're on the low end there. Now, there are free generic preventative medications and some of those make sense. For instance, if you have diabetics. You may want to pay for those on the generic drugs, because it's far cheaper than if they got into a serious situation. So a lot of places make, make the call there that. There are certain drugs we will subsidize basically. Okay, um, now we go to preferred. Preferred or brand name drugs listed on the plan's formulary. What a formulary is, is that when you, uh, when you get into, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shields PPO plan, they will have a list of drugs that they cover, and that's called a formulary. Okay, if you're out of that formulary, they're a whole lot more expensive. So in some cases, they will mandate that you have to use this, this, one or two of these drugs instead of these other drugs. And that's, that's how they're holding the cost down, because they're going with the more inexpensive. Okay, so the Wake County Plan pays a percentage of the cost for preferred medications. Union County Plan pays the dollar listed, or a percentage, whichever is greater. So, so here's what we have, twenty through thirty-five, you can see those. We are in the forty to fifty-five. And then you have others where there's a deductible, co-insurance, or percentage of cost. Now what, what that percentage of cost is, is what they're saying there is, they may charge you a fee plus X percent of what the drug actually costs. So when they say percentage of cost, and that comes into play with these more expensive drugs. Some of them can really be expensive. Now, the offset to that is, that also means that you are shifting a significant amount of cost over to that employee. Okay, next one. This is the prescription copays, non-preferred, and non-preferred or brand name drugs that are not included on the plan's formulary. In other words, you can get these, but if they're not on the formulary, they typically charge more. Does everybody follow that? So where we're at there, all three of ours are in the forty to fifty range. You'll see that the majority of our, of our other people are not. They're in different categories, sixty to seventy-five, are having a deductible, co-insurance, and then a percentage of the cost. Next one, specialty. This is the medication category that typically requires special handling, monitoring, or administration. So where we're at there, we're in the sixty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty dollar range. A lot of them have gone to a deductible, co-insurance, or percentage of cost. These are your most expensive drugs. So you've got prescription copays there, generic preferred and non-preferred. Does anybody have any questions on any of that on the, that's the pharmacy questions we've gotta deal with. Next thing is dental insurance. And let me preface all of this on dental insurance first by saying, the county does not provide any money for dental insurance. We provide a group plan, which theoretically should be cheaper for our employees, but they pay one hundred percent. But I do wanna point out one thing. Nobody, well, wait a minute, that's the next slide.
We have the most expensive dental plan in the state, but we also have the richest benefits. But it's supposed to be a zero sum. The premiums are supposed to cover all the expenses essentially in the plan.
So one of the things we're debating about looking at is, we may look at two plans. One that's a lower cost option for our employees than this, if we can do that. But this is what I wanted to point out to you. Buncombe Orthodontic Max, we're not close to anybody.
Well, we have to do that for the previous, previous manager's son, he needs a brace. No, the grandson, yeah, the grandson, grandson, when he needed braces.
But obviously, that's gonna, that's gonna drive the cost up too. I mean, you've gotta, you've gotta benefit three towns better than anybody else has got.
And the problem is, is I think that, 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 one of the risks is this, is that we're gonna price with, with dental going up. Now dental's trend's not as high as medical trend, but it's still, it still trends upward. That we're gonna price ourselves out of where it's gonna start to be very cost prohibitive for people to have this rich of a dental plan. And so that's something that, that we need to think about.
Which is why we think we may wanna look at a second plan that's less expensive. But I do think we also need to address that orthodontic limit, because we're, you know, we're off the chart on that. Okay, Kurt, you wanna handle this, um, cost of living impact?
I will do my best.
Well, we might have Heather do it, she get all the.
You, you wanna do it? And all if I get stuck. So, Performance Management helped us gather. This is data that we use to compare, or that the county uses to compare what a cost to live in Buncombe County. And Christina, you also helped with this, right? So you may, you may be coming up here. But, uh, but this is data that Performance Management uses to compare, uh, costs of living and prices with Buncombe County and other areas. So one of the things that this study, and this is a study, showed that, uh, the median income earned in Buncombe County has not matched the cost of living. I think that that's something we all know. And then also that it costs more to live in Buncombe County than it does comparative places in the state. So I think the net is, is that the spending dollar, a dollar does not go as far in Buncombe County as it does in other places in the state. So this is a chart that comes out. So if you see a dollar, in the United States is a dollar. In North Carolina, a dollar is technically worth a dollar and five cents. And so you could check with the other urban areas what a dollar is worth. So us, a dollar is actually worth ninety cents. Whereas if you live in Cataba County, a dollar goes, your dollar is actually worth a dollar fifteen cents. So that adds up after a while. Now, how did they come up with these numbers? So they basically use data sources, and Christina, help me out here. They gather data from different areas?
Yeah, these, these are the data sources that Spurling uses to gather all of the information about each of the localities to come up with their cost of living. And they, they have an index based on housing costs, um, you know, what it costs to live in that community. That's where they pull the all, all that.
Right, so, so here, this is how they weigh. So when they're coming up with that number, they weigh it based on housing, food, transportation, utilities, healthcare. Although for us, that probably needs to be weighted a little bit more. So Spur- so, um, so that's, the thing is, is that our salary, our salaries, while they may be higher, actually may be lower. And we're gonna show you, this chart, I think, shows the best thing. So this is supposing that everybody got a fifteen thousand dollar sal- or fifty thousand dollar salary. Well, if you use these numbers based on the dollar, the fifty thousand dollar salary for Buncombe County is forty-two thousand dollars. Whereas if you compare it to Cataba, which is, has, I think, the lowest cost of living, that fifty thousand dollar salary actually becomes fifty-four thousand dollars. So I think that what we just wanted to do is make sure that you see sort of, based on this Spurlings data, that the cost of living here is high, and that your money does not go as far as it would in other parts of the state.
Where's Cataba County?
Cataba's Hickory, that's a couple of counties over.
Hickory.
Hickory.
They've, uh, they got hit real hard. They were a textile and furniture manufacturing area. It went away, their base went away. One thing I do wanna stress here, is just to remember this, is that, uh, what Nancy said earlier is, the pay aspect has taken that into account. The reason we wanted to bring it to you was, uh, the benefits have not been adjusted like that, okay? So you may wanna keep that in mind as we're looking at that. And that, that was the primary purpose of doing that.
So someone making thirty thousand dollars a year here, it really, S O L.
It's, you gather, yeah, that's, uh, true. Yes, okay. Anything, anything else, Kurt?
I think that is the end of our presentation.
Okay, well, you know, as we said at the beginning, uh, the purpose today was really to give you the background information on all of it. It's what the methodology for the pay plan, the overview of our fringe benefits and how we rank, and also then to talk about the detailed components that make up a health plan. So what we'll be doing now on staff is studying all of that and come back to you with some recommendations on what we may do. And again, uh, I agree, it's not the best time, but the problem is, this health insurance continues to just, um, just go out of control. You know, and we've gotta get, we've gotta get a handle on it. What most jurisdictions have been forced to do is, you cannot afford that ten percent increase of you. So what most jurisdictions have done is, they tried to cut back on the value of the plan. There's two ways to attack this. You can either cut back on the benefit structure where, particularly where we're so much richer than everybody else on those benefits. Or you can look also at raising premiums, copays, deductibles, and all that, which means basically, our employees end up paying more of the plan's cost. So it, it, it really comes down to how you want to approach it. I did wanna make a couple more comments about that. Find the notes. Kurt, did I leave something up there? No, you didn't, sir. Okay. Well, uh, the one, the one additional comment I wanted to make is, is that as we go through and look at this health insurance plan, I want y'all to be aware that when you make changes in your health insurance plan, it makes a difference which one of these you choose to correct. Because they hit different employees differently.
Right.
For example, if you raise premiums, that hits everybody, right? If you were to take deductibles up, if you were to take physician visits, this, if you were to take pharmaceutical copays up, that's gonna hit the heavy user. That's gonna hit the person who goes to the doctor a lot, that has a lot of medications and that sort of thing. Or that has serious health problems, um, you know, where, where they have to get periodic treatments for that.
I think it's vulnerable.
Yeah, so you need to be cognizant of who's gonna get impacted by that change. It's not just about coming up with the savings, it's who's getting impacted. And we need to have a balance of that as we look at some of these options. So I just wanted to stress that to you. We're aware of that. It's not a pleasant task to have to go through this, for us or for you. But we will try to balance those kind of concerns as much as we can.
Well, it goes back, what you're talking about there is what I looked at in the pay a long time, a long time ago, of course, Commissioner. Because I saw what was happening with this two percent COLA. And I saw these two-hundred-thousand-dollar salaries, and I said, well, they don't need to be getting the COLA. Those are cheap, you know, they're in good shape anyway. The one, the lower people should be getting the two percent, and then you get to different points. You break it down into different areas. It falls from two to one, and then a half to one, and stuff like that. So even on the health side, like with the young people, which are not gonna do much medicine compared to an older person like myself, or, or, you know, any of us. The fact is, is there's a way to benefit and help them here.
And I will say that if we go to the high deductible plan, typically people, um, marry that up with a health savings account. Now, right now, you have FSAs, which is a flexible spending account. Flexible spending account is where our people set aside money in an account, and they can pay their medical bills out of that. Problem with a flexible spending account is, if you don't use it all that year, you lose.
You lose a few, right?
Well, we get to keep half of it now.
You can keep fi- five hundred dollars, you can carry forward to the next year.
But, but the, uh, the health savings account is your money. And so what a lot of places have done with a health, with a high deductible plan is, they will actually, uh, contribute a certain amount of money to that health savings account. The theory is, is that by them assuming higher deductibles, we'll offset that. And what you'll find is, a lot of people who will take advantage of that are gonna be your young and healthy people. Because, you know, they're gonna, they're like my son, they, they don't think anything's gonna happen to them, you know?
But if, if we look at, um, emergency workers, we look at sheriff deputies, we look at some of the people who are really making the lowest of the low.
Right.
They have to pay a high deductible that pushes them, I mean, all it takes is one high deductible, and they can't live. And that, that's what we're trying to, we're to face on employees who are talking about changing these things. It's, it's a catastrophic loss if you go from two thousand, two thousand dollars for some people, they can't come up with that.
Right.
And then if you say, okay, we're gonna change it to four thousand, sheriff's deputy, somebody gets sick. We know the high incidence of sickness in public safety workers. And, um, I think we really need to think, well, I'm not in favor of changing anything with this this year. I'm just, soon, need to let it go this year because I think you're causing a reputable strife to people even worrying about this. And I don't think they need that right now.
Well, there's been a lot of great information here. I appreciate everyone putting this together. Again, we're not making any decisions today. You know, the only thing I would say, I mean, I, a lot of what, you know, you just said, Ellen, resonates with me. I guess the one, the, but part of the reason, and from my perspective, this isn't just kind of a decision about where do we have to tighten the belt. You know, I mean, I think there's areas of the compensation package where I would really like for the county to try to do better and do more. I mean, I, I would really like to see the pay increased for county employees, especially those who need, who really, you know, really just need to make more money to be able to, you know, live in this community, right? So, so I thi- I think we do have to look at the totality of, you know, the, the direct, you know, kind of salary plus these other, these other benefits. And so I don't just wanna go in and just trim benefits, but if there's ways that we can look at the total package so that we also give, you know, can, can do, can do better in some areas where I think we, we definitely have to. Because I think we are gonna have to make some changes in order probably to get to some of the salaries up to where we want to be. So I think it's a healthy conversation, um, one where we should, you know, it is very important, and we should do it thoughtfully, you know, and carefully. So, any other questions or thoughts before we call it a day today?
Well, I mean, I think we need to really emphasize on what I learned here is, talk about the commissioners taking the pay cut, which, look at the numbers now of what the cost of living, because to be a commissioner, you have to live in the county. Or some employees don't, which I think what we're talking about with the commissioner's pay is probably taking a penny and cutting it in a thousand pieces, right, a forty thousand dollars a year. So that's not where I'm going. I'm going with this insurance. I think we need to understand, that's thirty-six million dollars, right?
Right.
Over.
Ten years.
I mean, that is raising property tax nine, ten, fifteen cents. Which is gonna offset some of the, what we're talking about, the insurance policies.
Yes, sir.
What, pay property tax instead of paying the insurance premium, something's gotta offset this.
Yeah, something's gotta give. I'm gonna put that chart back up, because I wanna make sure everybody understands too. That, that thirty, that thirty-six million dollars is just the tenth year. Every one of these years is more money. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
There's a gap every year. I just gave you thirty-six million dollars is, is the gap in the tenth year. And then, and even what we were talking about in different areas, you know, we're, we're talking about this. So let's just, let's talk about, okay, we've got school supplements that are super high now. They're, we're gonna have to go up on property tax if we keep handing the school supplements to them. So you look at this, you look at that, you look all around, you know, and I appreciate this, this is good. You're right, you see the green area, it keeps going up and every year, where we're at, it's thirty-six million on the last year. So, but, yeah. Aunt Ellen, our, our lower people need to be taken care of. I don't care if it's the sheriff's department or what, but we got higher people. And we got people that, that don't have to do them job, that type of jobs and make, or making a whole lot more money. And, you know, the structure of the salaries in Buncombe County, there's something bad wrong. I can tell you that. That's the one thing I consider.
Right, anything else?
And I guess, explain this word, we all understand, because we had to have a talk before a little bit about. If we're growing two and a half percent, we don't need the insurance growing ten percent or we're eventually.
You can't do it.
It's gonna be in outer space and we're gonna still be a year old.
That's correct.
Yeah.
You literally, you literally can't do this.
Now, if somebody's got, uh, that high efficiency. And I believe it's.
I guess somebody said one time, the only thing you have to do is just, you know, you don't have to work, you just charge it. The taxpayer's more money. That way you fix it. So that's, I'm not into that, that's one thing I'm against. Because we've got too many old people like me that's having to make payments on their property tax. So, you know, it's time for employees of this county and myself, I'll give up something, I don't care. The fact is, is, you know, it's, we're not the greatest people in the world, I'm not. A long shot. But I'm gonna look out, we gotta look out for the taxpayer. And I want to look out for our employees.
Yes.
But for the point, you have to stop. It's a balancing act.
Exactly.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Is there anything you want us to? Drew, do you have a question? Follow up with?
May I? Is it?
Patrick.
I guess one concern that I have right now is it looks like we're taking a deep dive into employees' compensation. After talking with a lot of employees after the last invasions came down, the environment amongst Buncombe County employees is toxic, it's scared, everyone's concerned with what's coming next. As we talked about removing COLA, as we talked about, uh, downsizing health insurance benefits, as we talked about longevity, all these things are part of how employees live and are making it through right now. Um, I think employees are just barely, uh, keeping this train on the tracks right now. I think the county's in a state of crisis and we haven't for some time now. We have interim leadership, we're making long-term decisions. I just, for the sake of county employees, take this slowly. I think there's a lot of concern amongst all departments right now about what you're gonna do. I feel like county employees have said to me that they feel like this is a punishment towards them. And I just want to advise y'all to move carefully and I know y'all need to be making decisive action. But be careful.
You said this is a year, year and a half away of doing the first part.
Now, as far as the evaluation process, it would take a year and a half to get to that. So what, what we would probably do in the upcoming budget would continue to be to use a COLA because you don't have an evaluation system to tie it to.
Yeah, we don't have one.
We don't have an evaluation system, so that, the COLA would continue. But what we're changing there, Drew, is this mandated COLA. We're saying we want to do away with this mandated COLA. That does not mean we wouldn't come back and recommend, uh, salary increases in the budget. But what we're saying is, the policy right now is whatever the CPI is in December, that's a mandated COLA that has to be paid in April. And I'm recommending you do away with that because you can't move to pay for performance type situation if you're mandated to give, uh, that amount of money in a COLA. So I, I want to stress that to employees. We're not saying we're not gonna do pay increases. What we're saying is, we're gonna do it like virtually every other local government does, which is it'll be part of the standard budget process every year. And the manager would make a recommendation to the board on what those increases would be. And then ultimately, it's up to the board. But it should be this board that makes that decision, not a board some eight years ago that started that policy. They need to be in control of what the salaries and wages are gonna be because they need to take into account what's the financial conditions in general, what's the financial condition of the county and all of that, and what can we reasonably afford. And to me, part of the, all of this is tied together because there's only so much additional revenue every year. You know, whatever our revenue growth is. And if that's two percent, we've got to be able to handle all of these things within that two percent. And that, and every year, you know, the Board of Education's gonna ask for more money. And part of that is because some of their employees are, uh, they're not state employees, they're beyond the basic education plan, and we pay for them one hundred percent out of local money. So whatever the state gives them on a salary increase, we have to come up with one hundred percent of that. So they're always gonna have inflationary increases. So we know we're gonna get there with that. We know that healthcare is rising more rapidly than any other expense. And then we want to be fair with our employees and give them reasonable raises as well. Those three things will drive the county's budget, and they will every year. And so, but our problem is, there's only one positive. And so we've got to get all of that into this with two percent growth.
Drew, I think what really is, when you look at perception now, not only the employees but the public, they've got to realize that what we're talking about today is our fiduciary responsibility. And part of that is, we want to be open and transparent. And folks, we've got to get control of this. This doesn't mean that we're just gonna cut all the employees off overnight and do it, you know? But we've got to have these hard discussions and we've got to look forward. Because if we don't, we have, we're on a collision course. But hopefully by starting to look and doing what the commissioner, what we should have been doing years ago, we can get to where we want to go. But, you know, the employees need to understand that, you know, what we're discussing now, that doesn't mean we're gonna cut out health benefits or we're gonna do this. But we've got to do the right thing, not only for employees, but for the taxpayers too. And these are hard discussions, and as we get into the budget, we're gonna be adding more, I'm sure. But hopefully at the end of the day, we will make the right decisions for everybody and we'll be able to balance it. But it's part of being open and transparent. You know, we want the public, employees, everybody to know, we're not doing this in a vacuum or behind closed doors. We want to explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, you know, the decisions that we'll make. And hopefully, everybody will understand that. But it's no different when I do my budget at home. You know, it's tough. Surely overrides me, but it's tough. You get that?
All right. Anybody else? Will we call it a day?
I'm good.
All right. Well, thanks everyone for your, thank you Drew for sharing your thoughts. These are important decisions and nobody's looking to, you know, they need, they need to be made carefully and they're, they're not easy and there's a lot of trade-offs. But we want to, we want, we do want to do the right things for, for the county employees and that's top of mind.
Yeah, we got to.
All right.